The Haywood County Board of Education meeting will come to order. Mr. Francis had a business engagement that he could not change, and so I will be conducting the meeting tonight. I want to welcome all of you to the meeting. And Mr. Rogers is going to open it with invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please all stand.
Let us pray. Dear Congress, Heavenly Father, we want to thank you for this opportunity that you give us to be here tonight. We want to thank you for the many things that you have done for us, the many, many things that you have guided our staff, our teachers, to help educate the children of Haywood County. We pray, Lord, that you guide and direct us in all the decisions that we make as a board, so that we can have the best educational opportunities available for all children of this county, that they can be successful. Lord, we pray that they continue to have a good summer, a safe summer, and bring all these children back to us again soon in August for another school year. God indirect us in all that we do, and we'll give you the praise and the glory for it all. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and be seated. I have a couple of announcements. One is that the next board meeting will be August the 11th, 7:00 here at the Educational Center. Another is we have bingo August the 23rd at the Canton Armory. I hope all of you will plan to attend. It's a lot of fun, and you might win something good. Any other announcements? Yes, ma'am.
We have the Tuscaloosa Drawdown on July 26, 6:00 p.m., Tuscaloosa Cafeteria. We also have the Western Carolina University Tuscaloosa High School, Pisgah High School Spirit Day, which was put together by Mr. Pat Smathers. That's August the 16th, starting in 12 minutes.
Thank you, Jane. Those are two important events for you also to put on your calendar.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Bingo. I missed what date that was.
August 23rd.
At what time?
6:00 is bingo.
That is through the foundation, correct?
That is through the foundation.
Thank you so much, ma'am.
Agenda adjustments. We do have a couple of adjustments for the agenda. 13A, please add the child nutrition bids. One would be for food and supplies, the other the chemistry contract, chemical contract. And then I want to add a 14B, a 403B vendor, and the 403B third party. Now, item number six, I would like to recognize Tracy Hargrove.
It is a privilege for me to get to stand here before you this afternoon to recognize one of our maintenance employees who I feel like has gone way above the normal call of duty. I think we are very, very fortunate in Haywood County to have the maintenance employees that we have. We've got several very good employees, but Wayne Worley, who has worked for Haywood County Schools for, I think, 15 or 16 years now, is an exceptional maintenance employee. Over the past 24 months, Wayne has been putting forth a lot of extra effort after work studying to receive licenses that will cover Haywood County Schools. And I don't know if everyone's familiar how the licenses work, but when an employee or a person gets a license, normally they put that license in their name, and they can only practice under their name. Wayne has put that license under the school, Haywood County Schools' name, so that he can practice, and our employees can work under him. He has received, in the past couple of months, he's been taking a lot of tests, burning the midnight oil, and he has received what's called HVAC 1, which is boiler licenses. He's received HVAC 2, which is unlimited cooling license. He's received HVAC 3, which is unlimited heating licenses, and he has also passed the state plumbing license, which is called P1. Just to give you an idea of how difficult these tests are to pass, the normal pass rate is about 18% on each one of them, and he passed all four. And not only that, he now, with these licenses, gives us the recognition in the state of being one of only three school systems in the entire state to have all those licenses covered. So let's ask Wayne to come up. Wayne, this has a certificate of recognition presented to you that says, "Haywood County Board of Education acknowledges and extends sincere congratulations for receiving your licenses for H1, H2, H3, and P1."
Thanks.
Madam Chair, members of the board, it's an honor to recognize our finance department. The Haywood County Board of Education acknowledges and extends sincere appreciation to our finance department for their hard work and dedication in achieving the State Board of Education Award in Excellence in Financial Management for the 2012-2013 school year. Remember, we're always a year behind. This is the second consecutive year our finance department has received this very prestigious award. This award is presented by the State Board of Education to districts who have no salary, audit exceptions, or position overdrafts, no over or underspent dollar allotments, accurate projections of state cash requirements, no use of invalid codes, or no user data errors. At this time, I'd like to recognize Mr. Bob Phillips, Finance Officer; Ms. Angie Gardner, Assistant Finance Officer; Amanda Robinson, Payroll Clerk; Tina Nolan, Payroll Clerk; and Lara Feinberg, Accounts Payable.
I'd like to thank our department for their hard work. A little over three and a half years ago, when I took Finance Officer's position, it was almost a total revamp of the department. And I told them I wanted one of these before I retired. So this makes two, so I'm very proud of them. They always step up to the plate and exceed everybody's expectations, and I appreciate all their hard work.
Now is the time period designated by the Board of Education for public comments. This time is set aside for comments from the general public in regard to matters of concern to the public. However, comments addressing specific students and/or personnel are prohibited due to confidentiality laws and regulations. Comments are limited to three minutes. The Board requests that all speakers adhere to the time limitation and prohibition against mentioning individual students and personnel. Ms. Moody, do we have any speakers?
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Miller.
I'm going to be addressing the funding formula, and I'm going to quote from an article that appeared today in The Mountain Air. Quote, "During the recent work session, Superintendent Ann Garrett told the school board what resources schools would likely have to do without in the coming year. In April, school officials gave a presentation requesting $1.1 million from the county, a 6.87% increase. While the commissioners were sympathetic, they followed a funding formula adopted a decade ago, which provided for a 2.33% budget increase," end quote. During the last county commission meeting, I demanded that Julie Davis resign her position as Finance Director, and if she didn't resign, commissioners should fire her for falsifying PPA values in the funding formula during the years 2008 through 2011. The problem for you is, is that the teachers in Haywood County, and most importantly, Haywood County students, were denied by Davis and the county commissioners of nearly $15 million during the period Julie Davis cooked the books. You will find a complete analysis of the funding formula and my findings on my website, Julie Davis mucked with PPA values, which resulted in giving you a 2.33% increase this year, and as already determined, you will get a 0.89% increase next year. What are you going to do about it? Where do we go from here? Here are some questions posed by Becky Johnson, who happens to be with us tonight, regarding the funding formula. Is the issue whether commissioners use the funding formula as a crutch when it comes to school funding? Is the funding formula politically expedient by allowing commissioners to avoid a more difficult annual conversation about school funding? Is the school funding formula working for both parties, or does it benefit one party more than another? If the funding formula wasn't followed, why do commissioners continue to publicly tout the funding formula as a success? Is it genuine to herald the funding formula as an accomplishment if it wasn't followed as many times as it was? And finally, is the funding formula obsolete now, given the changing needs of the school system? It is my understanding that a new committee will be formed to come up with a new funding formula. Who is slated to be on that committee? Is it the same people who gave you the last three funding formula resolutions, county commissioners, and you, members of the school board? I would recommend expanding this board to include members of the public or other knowledgeable individuals. I'll even volunteer to be on this committee, since I am the only one around here who seems to be able to challenge Julie Davis. I thank you for allowing me time to express my opinion.
Thank you, Mr. Miller, for your comments. Item number nine, minutes for the June 9th and June 18th, both closed and regular sessions.
Make a motion to be approved.
Mr. Rogers, make the motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Shaniffel. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please raise your hand. That is unanimous. Now I'd like to recognize Mr. Todd Transom.
Members of the board, I'd ask you to direct your attention to item number 10 on the agenda. That is the Need My Transcript implementation. Let me tell you just a little bit about what Need My Transcript is. Currently, well, Need My Transcript is basically a student records processing system that is going to allow us to accept student records and requests online. Currently, that process looks something like this. If you need a transcript and you're a student, you come to the central office, you pay the transcript fee, and you're provided a transcript. And that's not going to change. But the problem happens when students that may have moved away and live in another state far away, and they need those transcripts, often this time of year when community colleges and universities are beginning to start and roll up for the new semester. They need those, and need those fairly quickly. Currently, they have to mail in a check along with a form, and then we process that and send that back out where they may request it. But that whole process could take anywhere from seven to 14 days, depending on how long it takes for the mail to get to us, and how long it takes for it to get back where it's going. And we're looking at ways to cut that down and to make that just a little bit more efficient. And this is where Need My Transcript comes in. What process this is going to allow us to do is to basically ask Need My Transcript, which is an online company that does this at no cost for the school, to accept our online requests for transcripts. They will ask the student to fill out some paperwork that assures us of having FERPA compliance, and then they will send that on to us. In exchange, they're going to add a $2 fee to that student's transcript fee. So currently, the transcript fee's $5. That would mean that if you got it online, it would cost you $7. But it's going to be immediately, so that immediate, so the same day that that person requests that transcript, that transcript's sitting in our office. We have all the paperwork we need to process it, and we can be four or five days ahead of where we were processing those requests. The company also allows us to process all of our third-party requests through that site as well, which means that those companies that are frequently calling us asking for graduation verification would also go through a process. They would have a fee as well, so that to the, the fee that's assessed to them from us for online graduation requirements, they're going to add a $5.95 fee to that to pay for it. And so what that fee covers is the processing fee, as well as the fact that they're going to be taking credit cards, not us. They're going to be handling that, handle any of the banking fees that go along with that, and all that is included in their part of the fee. So the fee is something that's assessed to the end user and not to the school system. The benefit to us is it's going to make it a whole lot more efficient, and it's going to standardize the process, so it's going to help us to make sure that each and every time we hand out a student record, we're complying with FERPA in that process. Tonight, I was just bringing that to you, to your attention, to make sure you don't have any questions for me about it.
Thank you, Mr. Transom. Item number 11, 2014-15 migrant education program application. Dr. Garrett.
Madam Chair, members of the board, for your information and also for your approval tonight, you have, I'm going to give you a synopsis of the migrant grant. This is a $51,000 federal grant that we have. We use it to employ a recruiter/tutor position, travel expenses, instructional slash parent involvement supplies, computer supplies, and health services. We serve 64 children in this program. We recruit school-age and out-of-school youth students into the Haywood County Migrant Program. We assist migrant families and enrolling students to our system of school for the first time. We provide tutoring services to the students and arranging English classes for other members of the family as well. We assist families with medical needs, food assistance, and transportation. We provide assistance financial with sending students into the summer camp. This is a federal requirement. We have to do that. Also, we provide assistance to local farmers in communicating with their workers. Questions or concerns?
Do I hear a motion to approve this application? Ms. Shaniffel has made the motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Rogers. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand.
Thank you.
It is approved unanimously. Item number 12, Haywood County Health and Human Service Agency Agreement.
Madam Chairman, Board, this is the regular contract we enter into with the Health and Human Services in regard to providing nursing care in the schools. There's not any significant changes. There were some minor changes, but not really affecting the substance of the contract.
Do I hear a motion to approve the contract?
I'll make the motion to approve the contract.
Mr. Jim Francis made a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Henson. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Smathers. Item 13, Policies. Mr. Shepherd.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. We just have three policies for a second reading tonight, and the first one is the minimum requirements for participation in athletics and extracurricular activities. The change on this one is just, like we talked about last time, brought about because the NCHSA has dropped their requirement that students have, you know, any, basically, attendance policy at all, as far as they're concerned, which leaves that up to the school systems themselves to do that. So we felt like it was imperative to try to get this in place before the school year started, and speaking to the coaches, athletic directors, and principals, they all felt like the 85% that the NCHSA did have was a good, a good rule, so that's what we went with. The one difference between this and the, what the NCHSA said before was that we are going to allow any time made up, like for summer school, makeup sessions, Saturday school sessions, that are for the purpose of regaining credit, because they all felt like that if the time was well-spent enough to earn credit, it was well-earned enough to be used toward playing sports.
Do I hear a motion to approve SA 8?
Motion.
Mr. Henson's made the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Rogers. Any discussion? All in favor? Unanimously. Thank you.
Okay, the second policy is P29 about the employee supplements, and the question on that one was on Section B eligibility. Who would be eligible as concerned with when they were hired? And it reads, the way we have it changed, would be employees who continued employment from the previous year, or others whose hire date is on or before the first working day of December of each year are eligible for the supplement, as long as they're still employed at time of payment.
Do I hear a motion to approve P29?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Mr. Francis made the motion. Second?
I'll second it.
Ms. Shaniffel had seconded it. Any discussion?
I just want to thank you for revising the policy.
Hearing none, all in favor, please raise your hand. It passes unanimously. Thank you.
All right. And the third one is, you know, we just passed the Students with Food Allergies, the SA 20, earlier this year, but the school nurses kept on working on this policy in order to make it as refined as it could, make it as streamlined as it could be for principals to implement. And so basically, this just clarifies the role of the school nurse and other school people in implementing this policy, and it also makes sure that parents know that they have to have documentation. You know, it's not just, "I walk in, I think my kid's allergic to so-and-so." You have to have proper documentation, and although they're not included as part of the policy, these periphery materials are available, and we're going to put those on the, on the website under forms, where the principals can easily access these, and it'll basically walk them step by step through the implementation of the food allergy policy for a family.
Okay. Do I hear a motion to approve SA 20?
So move, Mr. [inaudible].
Mr. Rogers has made the motion. Second, Mr. Leatherwood. Any discussion?
I would like to say, Madam Chair, that, yeah, I've not heard any comments against this at all. Also, this also allows, like your food services, as stated in that policy, also will be working with each school, so that those preparations of the food, that is some allergy to some kids, it is not prepared altogether. It is in separate containers or separate vats, whatever you want to call it. It is separated. Those foods are prepared separately.
One thing the policy does try to not do is to guarantee, you know, an allergen-free environment, because we just feel like that's, you know, Walmart is not an allergen-free environment. So we, we don't feel like, as a school system, we could promise that either.
Yeah, we're doing all we can do, but, yeah, you say it's not guaranteed.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. It passes unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Shepherd, you're hard to work on this policy.
Appreciate you.
And now we will go to 13A, the child nutrition bids. I recognize Mr. Bob Phillips.
Madam Chair, members of the board, have before you tonight two child nutrition bids. The first is for food and supplies for the year 2014-15. The bid was sent out to four companies, and two companies responded. U.S. Foods had the low bid, $5,799,2983, and this is a bid to a co-op that Haywood County is part of. So I would like to request that the board approve this bid.
Do I hear a motion to approve the bid for the food and supplies?
Make a motion, Mr. [inaudible].
Mr. Henson's made a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Kirkpatrick. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please raise your hand. It passes unanimously.
The second bid is for chemical supplies. The bid was sent out to five companies. Four responded, and Ecolab responded with the lowest, with the lowest bid, and this bid is to a co-op made up of Buncombe, Haywood, and Henderson Counties, and I would like to request approval of this bid.
Madam Chair, I'd like to ask to table that bid, table that motion.
All right, there's a motion to table this bid. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Mr. Rogers has seconded it. Any discussion?
How's this going to put us off on the bid? I mean, is this something that needs to be done right now? So I guess next question might be is, why did we, how long has the bids been out? When did we put them out?
I can't answer that, Mr. Kirkpatrick. Any other discussion? All right, the motion is to table. All in favor of that, please raise your hand. The motion passes, so we will table this until the next meeting. Thank you, Mr. Phillips. Now I would like to recognize Mr. Jim Francis for our regularly monthly financial reports.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Finance Committee has met, and we have gone over the monthly reports. Everything presented was seen to be in order, so at this time, I'd like to bring before the board a motion to approve the monthly financial reports as presented.
Mr. Francis has made the motion. Second by Mr. Kirkpatrick. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hands. It passes unanimously. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I have the next item as well. It's a contract to change the, or to allow the 403B provider for new employees, and I think it's going to be available for current employees if they want this as well, but they don't have to change. And this, the ability to use TIA-CRAFT as a 403B provider, because this coincides with what the state uses, so it's going to be easier for processing and everything, and it's to allow the new hires to participate in this 403B, and as far as bookkeeping and everything, it's going to be a little bit easier. So at this time, I would like to put in form of a motion to allow TIA-CRAFT to be used as a 403 provider for employees.
Mr. Francis has made a motion. Do I hear a second? Mr. Kirkpatrick, seconded. Any more discussion?
This is an elective choice.
It is elective choice, yes. So this is mainly for new employees, but if current employees would like to participate, they can switch over, yes. We're not asking any current employee to switch off of what plan they do have.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please raise your hand, and that passes unanimously. Thank you.
There's one other item with that, is the TIA-CRAFT is wanting to be used as a third-party administrator for the 403B as well. Apparently, the current administrator is having some, you know, it's not, they're not getting back reports and stuff, and they're having some problems getting reporting to them, so they would like to use this company as a third-party administrator as well.
You made that motion. Did you already make that motion?
Yes, I'm making that motion.
Mr. Francis has made the motion, and second by Mr. Kirkpatrick. Any more discussion?
Any cost to the school system on that?
No, there is no cost on that one.
Good question. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please raise your hands. All right, it passes unanimously. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Francis.
Thank you.
And now I would like to recognize Dr. Garrett for Personnel.
Madam Chair, members of the board, for your information, you have nine separation from employments. Employee status changes, you have 10, and you have three leave of absences. For approval, you have one separation from employment. You have 17 employments, and I'm going to stop there, Madam Chair. and I'm going to stop there, Madam Chair.
All right. Do I hear a motion? Thank you. Mr. Kirkpatrick has moved over here, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Leatherwood, any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please raise your hands. And that passes unanimously.
Madam Chair, members of the board, for your approval, you have seventeen employment status change, excuse me, you have eighteen employment status changes for your approval.
All right. Do I hear a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion to approve.
Mr. Francis has made the motion, do I hear a second? Mr. Rogers seconded, any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. It passes unanimously, thank you.
Yes, Madam Chair, I'm going to pull number six and number eleven for your approval at this time.
And Dr. Garrett has pulled number six and number eleven, do I hear a motion that we accept these two?
So moved.
Mr. Leatherwood has made the motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Rogers, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please raise your hands. Let me see that again. The motion passes five to two, all opposed?
I'll write my answer.
Okay.
Oppose, oppose.
Six, it passes six to one, Dr. Garrett.
Madam Chair, for your approval, you have two leave of absences, and I'm going to take those separate, I'm going to take number one first.
All right. Leave of absence number one, do I hear a motion to accept that?
I'll make the motion to accept.
Ms. Shannable makes that motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
Mr. Kirkpatrick seconds it, all in favor, please raise your hand. Four, all opposed, raise your hand. To three, it passes four to three.
Okay. For your approval, Madam Chair, number two.
Make a motion, Madam Chair.
Mr. Rogers made a motion to accept number two, second. Mr. Leatherwood seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please raise your hands. That passes unanimously.
Madam Chair, for your approval, I'm going to do twenty-two contracted services, and I'm going to pull number fourteen. So those twenty-two that I have not pulled.
All right. Do I hear a motion to accept those?
Motion to approve.
Mr. Henson has made the motion.
Second.
Second, Mr. Kirkpatrick, any discussion?
She pulled it.
I pulled it.
I do have a, is that twenty-three or twenty-two?
I've got twenty-two, because I pulled one, so that would have been twenty-three.
Is there twenty-four on the list?
I've got twenty-three on my list.
Okay.
Twenty-four on there.
Yeah, we have twenty-four on our list.
Okay, then those that are on the list, with the exception of number fourteen, we will approve.
Right, okay. Thank you for that clear question.
All right, do I hear a motion to accept those, with the exception of number fourteen?
There's a motion.
Did you make it?
Yeah.
All right, Mr. Henson made that, Stephen seconded, any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. That is unanimous.
Okay, I submit to you number fourteen.
I'll make a motion, that's approved.
Mr. Rogers has made the motion, second. Mr. Kirkpatrick, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, number fourteen, raise your hand. You had to recuse yourself. Six with one abstention.
Madam Chair, members of the board, you have two substitutes, three probationary teacher contracts, fifty-five employed coaches, and then you have seven non-employed coaches, and I'm going to stop at that point.
All right, do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Kirkpatrick has made the motion, do I hear a second? Ms. Shannable seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please raise your hands. It passes unanimously.
Okay, Madam Chair, volunteer coach services, we have seventeen, I have pulled out number seventeen, number eighteen, number nineteen, and I will take those as a group. So let's do the seventeen first, and then I'll pull the seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen.
Okay.
So moved.
Mr. Kirkpatrick has made the motion to approve all but those that you have pulled, do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Mr. Francis seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of accepting those unanimously.
Okay, I'd like to request number seventeen, number eighteen, and number nineteen be approved at this time.
Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Leatherwood has made the motion.
Second.
Mr. Henson seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, accepting seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen, please raise your hands.
Abstention.
Okay, that is six with one abstention, thank you. Thank you, Dr. Garrett.
Madam Chair, members of the board, at this time, I'd like to ask Mr. Clint Connor, Principal of Clyde Elementary, to introduce his one-half Title I Teacher, one-half Assistant Principal, following Mr. Trevor Putnam, Principal at Waynesville Middle School, to introduce the new Assistant Principal, and then last, Mr. Travis Collins, Principal at Tuscaloosa, to introduce our new head coach.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Mr. Nolte, Dr. Garrett, first of all, I want to say thanks to our Clyde teachers for showing up tonight, that's wonderful support. And now to introduce the new AP at Clyde Elementary School. First, I start with a question, why Mrs. Knight? And then, first of all, she has three children that are currently in Haywood County schools, she has eight years of curriculum coaching experience in Buncombe County, eight years of classroom teaching experience, she is currently serving on the board for North Carolina Reading Association, she's the district coordinator in Buncombe County School for the Read to Achieve Camp, and she is highly skilled at using data to drive teaching instruction. Before I go any further, I want to just tell a quick story about the interview process. Ms. Trantham and myself were going through it, and all the curriculum lingo, so to speak, and we were in it about twenty minutes, and finally we come to a stop and asked Ms. Knight, and I said, how loyal are you to Haywood County Schools and Clyde School? And I was telling her about the experience this past year with Ms. Trantham, and how I knew at the end of the day how she had our back, and how she had Haywood County Schools' back. And as Ms. Knight stood up to get tissues, as Ms. Trantham was sitting there crying, she goes, I don't care what you ask me to do, as long as it's in the best interest of kids, I'll do whatever you want me to do, and I knew right there that I had the right person. So it is my esteemed privilege to announce Ms. Dana Knight as AP for Clyde Elementary
Good evening, Chairwoman Milner, school board members, Dr. Garrett, Dr. Nolte, Mr. Connor, ladies and gentlemen. I would first like to thank Mr. Clint Connor, Principal of Clyde Elementary, for seeking me out and recognizing my dedication to doing what's right for students in consideration for the position of Assistant Principal. He said he talked to more people than I would ever know, so it was funny. Mr. Connor's enthusiasm and dedication to high-performance teaching and learning is synonymous with my vision for continuous improvement in laser-focused instruction. Over the past year, his partnership with Ms. Trantham has laid the groundwork for improving student achievement, and I am honored to be considered for his team. Secondly, I would like to thank my family who is here tonight, actually have four kids in Haywood County, and who has always supported my devotion to public education. I am extremely proud of my children who inspire me always and allow me to adopt new kids every year. I would like to thank my husband, Ken Knight, who understands that school is my second home, and supports the time commitment it takes to get things done and moving achievement forward. Lastly, I want to publicly thank my former boss and mentor, Candy Sellers, a Clyde native, who is the Director of Elementary Ed for Buncombe County Schools. Her dedication to my professional growth has allowed me to grow my leadership skills, and her mentorship has made a tremendous impact on me. I would also like to thank my instructional coaching family for sharing this great joy and opportunity in my career with me. I promise you all, I will work hard for my second home, Clyde Elementary, and Haywood County Schools. Thank you very much.[1253.01][1253.01](Applause)
Thank you, Ms. Knight, and we're looking forward to working with you. I always am happy to see another good woman in the system.[1267.41][1267.41](Laughter)
Mrs. Chairman, members of the board, Dr. Garrett, Dr. Nolte, ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to introduce the new Assistant Principal for Waynesville Middle School. Again, an extensive process, similar to Mr. Connor, interviewed lots of folks, but I really believe in our mission here in Haywood County, which is passionate work, productive work, and student success. I've often said I hire the things that I cannot teach or cannot give someone, so I always try to hire someone who is very intelligent, who's hardworking, and last, but most importantly, that has a love of kids. My selection for Assistant Principal at Waynesville Middle School exhibits all of those, and that is Kiffin Queen.[1319.33][1319.33](Applause)
Dr. Garrett, Dr. Nolte, school board members, I want to thank you so much for this opportunity. I've had a lot of great mentors, working with underneath Nancy Beaker, Heather Hollingsworth, and Sherri Arrington, and now I get to work alongside another great leader, Mr. Putnam. So I promise to work hard to do what's best for the school, and most importantly, the students, so thank you.[1352.83][1352.83](Applause)
Thank you, Mr. Queen, and we look forward to working with you, and I know your work ethic, and it's great.
Madam Chair, Dr. Ann, Dr. Bill, this is an exciting day in the history of Tuscaloosa High School football. We have so many people to thank that have been a part of this process, have contributed to this process. I want to thank the board and the support that you provide athletics in Haywood County. You understand how important it is that our kids are engaged from seven o'clock in the morning till twelve o'clock at night, and how important that is to our families as well. We really appreciate the support that you provide to our athletic programs. I want to thank Dr. Ann and Dr. Bill, they provide our principals with so much support, and I want you to understand that, the type of leadership that we get every day makes such a significant difference in the lives of principals. I think sometimes we don't say enough about Dr. Ann and Dr. Bill, but as a principal at a new place, I can't tell you how much the leadership that they have provided me means to me, and to our system and to our staffs. I also want to thank our Tuscaloosa family, what a great place. I've only been there a couple weeks, but from the feedback that I've received so early on in my new career there, the level of support that we have at Tuscaloosa High School is absolutely tremendous, and that's why we're going to continue to be successful. The final group I want to say thank you to is to our boys. What they have gone through over the past couple weeks is tough. When you're with somebody for a couple years, and you work the way that you work to build a successful program, and then your coach leaves, and we don't blame them a bit, we understand why coaches come and go for opportunities, but that's a tough position for our kids to be in. And I want to thank them for sticking with us, and for working hard, and for knowing that they're going to continue to work hard tomorrow morning. And now it'll be time for me to introduce our next head football coach at Tuscaloosa High School, Coach Tommy Persley. I could go on and on about this man. You take a look at all of his accolades, last year spent, last fall as the defensive coordinator at Rivard College, from 1993 until 2012 was the head football coach at Northeast Guilford High School, had twenty consecutive years in the playoffs, six different district championships, three sectional championships, two state championship appearances, and has won 226 games as a head coach. I could go on and on. The layer of accomplishments and the things that this coach has done is unbelievable. We're lucky to get him at Tuscaloosa High School, I kind of feel like he's lucky to come to Tuscaloosa High School, too. And the most important thing to me, though, is when I sat down with one of our dads of one of our players, he said, Travis, do this, we want a winner, we want a man of integrity and character. And after spending as much time as I have with Coach Persley, I can promise you that we have found that, we have found a proven winner, and we're building for success at Tuscaloosa High School. So it's my honor to present to you our next head football coach. We welcome Coach Tommy Persley and his wife, Lisa, to the Mountaineer family.
Wow, that sounds pretty good when you read it out loud like that. But believe me, there were some bumps along the way, and along the road, and along my career. But I would like to say thank you to this board, and to Mr. Collins, Mr. Mashburn, Dr. Garrett, for this tremendous opportunity that I have to lead the Tuscaloosa football program. I'm really excited, and I'm looking forward to directing these young men, and I'm going to do everything in my power to help them achieve to their fullest potential as football players, as students, and as citizens of this community. And I'm very excited about this opportunity. I was actually retired, and this is one of the few places that would drag me out of retirement to come back and work with teenagers, so I'm very excited about it. And again, my wife here, thank you, Lisa. You're talking about disrupting somebody's life. We live in a house we've lived in for 21 years, we're in Guilford County. Let's go coach a little football, if it'll make you happy, let's go. So thank you, Lisa. Thank you very much.[1641.91][1641.91](Applause)
On behalf of the Tuscaloosa Boosters Organization, we're proud to have you as a member of the club. Here's your crosshairs.
Coach Persley, we're so glad to have you welcome, and I can, on behalf of the board, tell you, you have our support, except there's a couple of guys when you play tennis, I
Madam Chair, if I could make one quick announcement, I failed to mention that tomorrow morning at 10:00, we'll officially introduce Coach Persley at our press conference in the Tuscaloosa High School auditorium, which will be followed by a meet and greet opportunity for our boosters club, our touchdown club, and our football family, so you're welcome to attend that if you'd like. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. Did we approve that twenty? Dr. Garrett, did we approve 20 through 25 on personnel?
I think you stopped at 17 on the...
Should we make a motion?
Make a motion, that we approve. Okay, Stephen made the motion, second. Mr. Francis, any discussion? We just, we overlooked that. All in favor, please raise your hand. Thank you, it passes unanimously. And that is the end of our agenda, and we, I need a motion because we need to go back into closed session. Thank you again for coming, it was a great board meeting, and welcome all you new people to our system.
Motion to go back in closed session, second.
Okay.[1754.83][1754.83](Applause)